I'd like to call this meeting in order of the Maricopa County Planning Commission, December 7th, 2023. We have roll call vote, please. Roll call vote.
Chairman Slasher.
Here.
Commissioner Arnett. Commissioner Dan Zeison. Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Landau.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Lindblum.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya. Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Everybody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, with God as its father, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you all very much for coming down here. Next item is the chairman's announcements. Excuse me. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting law ARS 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office. They're also available on the planning and development website one week prior to hearing at www.mericopa.gov/planing. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case should fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or raise your hand within go-to webinar. The amount of time left for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted a desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. Chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. The chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. Lastly, the chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions in seconds. And again, I know it said that in the announcements, but we have a full agenda today, so if we could, I'm going to limit any speakers from the public to two minutes. With the exception of maybe the person with the video, however long that is, I don't know, but we'll play that by ear. Next item is the minutes. Are there any questions or changes to the minutes of the October 19th hearing? Hearing none. Minutes are approved. Consent item. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in the audience, either in favor over or in opposition? Hearing none. Is there anybody online, David, wishing to speak on item number seven? Either in support or opposition? David? David, can you hear me?
Chairman, David has indicated that there's no one online right now.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to move item number seven from the regular agenda to the consent agenda. With that, I don't know who that is. Darren, if you'd like to present the consent.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, there are now five items on consent. They are Z 2023 028, known as Justice Battery Energy Storage System in District Four. It's a zone change to Industrial Two IUPD for a 14-acre site at the northwest corner of Tuthill and Broadway. There's no known opposition. The recommendations for approval in paragraph 13, subject to conditions A through J. Case Z 2023 046, known as PH 68231, AZ 5150 Gila River in District Five. This is a special use permit for a 199-foot monopole wireless communication facility in the Rural 43 zoning district, generally located along Old US Highway 80 near Cactus Road in the Arlington area. There's no known opposition. Approval is recommended in paragraph 20, subject to conditions A through J. The third item is Z 2023 067, known as USAZ 5163 Wickenberg WCF in District Four. This is a special use permit for 110-foot monopole wireless communication facility in the Rural 43 zoning district, generally located along Highway 60 in Agila. There's no known opposition. The recommendations for approval, subject to conditions A through H in paragraph 11. The 2023 116, known as Guardian Self-Storage in District Four. The zone change to C2CUPD for a four-and-a-half-acre site northeast of Glendale and Dicert. There's no known opposition. The recommendations for approval, subject to conditions A through L in paragraph 13. I'll draw your attention to revised condition C per the handout in regard to the parking ratio for the CUPD. And then finally, item number seven, Z 2019 145, known as Dynamite Water LLC in District Two. This is Cottage Industry Special Use Permit in the Rural 43 zoning district for the parking of commercial water hauling trucks south of the southwest corner of 166 Street and Lone Mountain in the Rio Verde Road, in the Rio Verde area. This is a four-and-three-quarter-acre site. There are 74 support letters for opposition, but no one present to speak to this case. The recommendation in paragraph 12 is for approval, subject to conditions A through H. That concludes your consent agenda. I'm trying to, have to try and answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Darren. Is there anyone from the commission that has any questions of staff on the consent? Or anybody from the public that wishes to speak that hasn't filled out a card? Seeing none. Is there anybody online, David, wishing to speak? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Please on the consent items, one, two, three, four, and seven.
I move to approve. This is Lawrence.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Motion is second.
I'll second.
Oh, thanks, Commissioner Swart. I already just had a second from Commissioner Landau. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindblum.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Slasher, I'm sorry, Chairman Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of six to zero.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to regular agenda item number five. Staff like to present? Oops.
Chairman Slasher and members of the commission, agenda item five is for Montana Tractor, case number Z 2021 007, which was removed from postponement on October 5th of 2023. The request is for a zone change from Rural 43 to C3CUPD for 4.7 acres to permit retail sales of tractors and equipment sales. The site is located at the northwest corner of Happy Valley Road and Ninth Avenue in the North Phoenix area. The City of Phoenix General Plan identifies the site with the land use designation of Commercial Commerce Business Park, which is consistent with the retail sales of tractors and equipment. A new public notice was conducted with one letter received yesterday in opposition and provided to the commission as a handout. The subject site is part of a four parcel request for annexation to the City of Phoenix filed back in August of 2021. The applicant has informed the county that there is a City of Phoenix hearing scheduled for December 13th regarding annexation. The applicant has requested a modification to condition C to add some additional language with, with staff support. The modified language would read as follows. Condition C, the CUPD overlay is applied to restrict the use of site to farm-related vehicles and equipment leasing, rentals, and sales and similar uses as approved by the county zoning administrator, but not including equipment customary used for heavy construction. Staff believes the C3CUPD zoning is appropriate for the site, which conforms with this Phoenix General Plan land use designation. Staff therefore recommends the commission adopt a motion recommending the Board of Supervisors approve Z 2021 007, subject to conditions A through J with modification to condition C as presented and also as the other conditions outlined in the staff report. At this time, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Are there any questions from the commission of staff?
I have one.
Commissioner Landau?
Yes. Have there been any, I noticed there were some complaints made to the county prior to, I think, 2020, maybe? Were there, have there been any recent?
Commissioner Landau, and the commission, there was just one received recently with a new public notice. Everything in the staff report was generated from 2021 with the original application submitted.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else from the commission? The applicant present?
Yeah, yeah.
There's no.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just correct. I believe the question related to zoning complaints. Yes, we received a letter of opposition. There have been no zoning complaints since the one you mentioned, Commissioner.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
No.
Please strike the last statement made by the unidentified gentleman. There's nobody that you know of that's in opposition, correct? Um, no, I, I will.
We haven't received any speaker cards.
If you could please give a brief.
Oh, yes.
Identify yourself and then just give a brief presentation, please.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Kate Schaefer. I'm with the firm May, Tenzin, Barron &amp; Gillespie. With me today is Jesse Callahan and the applicant as well. I, I know you have a full agenda, so we do have a presentation prepared, but I think that staff very succinctly stated it's consistent with the Vision 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Rezoning is consistent with the City of Phoenix General Plan. So I'm, I'm happy to address any questions, but we will leave it with what the staff has said.
Okay, we'll see if anybody from the commission has any concerns or anybody from the public comes up. If not, we'll go from there.
Great. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll let you come back up. Anybody from the commission have questions of the applicant? Hearing none. Anybody that's here in person? That wishes to speak? Seeing none. David, is there anybody online wishing to speak?
Chairman, I, I don't believe so. I did, I do have one person I'm chatting with, but I can't tell what, what topic they want to speak on. They might want to speak on this one, but they haven't responded to me, so.
Okay, well, we're going to move on then. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none. Do I have a motion, please, on item number five?
I'll make a motion to approve case number Z 2021 007. Conditions.
Okay. I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Landau. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Lawrence, seconds.
Okay, I have a second from Commissioner Landau. We have roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindblum.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Chairman Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of six to zero.
Hey, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, it's, sorry to interrupt, but I just want to confirm that motion includes the recommended change to condition C.
Commissioner Landau?
Yes, that included that. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Rachel, for bringing that up. Uh, moving on, item number six. Staff like to present? I do have one card in opposition.
Before staff presents, I need to recuse myself.
Yeah.
Due to a conflict.
The Commissioner Landau's recusing herself from item number six. Sorry about that. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. MCP 2023 004, the AZL 01777 Battle Plan Tranche One. A case, the subject site is about 1.1 acres and is located south and east of the southeast corner of Patton Road and 243rd Avenue in the Whitman area. The site is within the Rural 43 zoning district and is also within the LDN 65 Noise Contour and APZ 2 Zone of the MAA MF zoning overlay. Next slide, please. The request is for an 80-foot wireless communication facility that will utilize a monopine steffing features to mimic a pine tree design. The applicant is requesting reductions in several setbacks for the wireless communication facility. A 23 feet from the edge of the antenna array to the eastern lot line, 72 feet to the southern lot line, and 120 feet to the western lot line. The applicant is also requesting an increase in allowed antenna array diameter to 13 feet 3 inches. Staff have received one email in opposition, which stated concern over the proximity of the the wireless communication facility to accessory structures and the properties south of the tower, as well as expressing concern over the chosen pine tree steffing design choice, stating a desire that the tower should incorporate designs to blend into the Norin landscape. Staff notes that comments from both the City of Buckeye and Luke Air Force Base were received. However, both of them shared no concern over the request. Staff recommends the condition adapt a motion of approval for MCP 2023 004, subject to recommended conditions A through F. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Are there any questions of staff from the commission at this time? Hearing none is the applicant here, wish to speak? Change.
Chairman, the, the applicant is online. I have her unmuted.
Okay. Is it Rachel?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
It's Rachel Carson.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, as he stated previously, it's for, for the 80-foot monopine with a 50 by 50 compound. I really had, don't have any further to add to that.
Okay. We appreciate your brevity. That's your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant from the commission? Hearing none. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? There, I have one card, Mark Wilkins. It's in opposition. Please state your name for the record. If you could limit your comments to several minutes, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Mark Wilkins. My wife Barbara Wilkins is with, is with me today. We live directly behind this property that they want to establish this tower. From my back window to where this towers are, to the edge of my property is 212 feet. Where they want to put this site, evidenced by where they did the soil sample test, the drilling is less than 30 feet off on the back of my property line. We have concerns as well as the former neighbor that complained or was in opposition due to, we have animals at the back of our property. The proximity of that is just, to us is not acceptable. There's a full 1.1 acre there that, there's houses to the east, there's houses to the west, there's houses to the south. Why does it have to be at the back of that property, right up next to our, our property line? Why couldn't it be put further out? We, we're not opposed to having increased communications out there in Whitman because it's very limited as it is. However, we think another location would be better suited for the the homes that are there. We've been there since 2006, and when we moved in, we were told that nothing could be built on that property because of the fact that it was in the military fly zone. As such, we've been told that we also cannot even erect a shed or do anything on our property due to the fact that it's in that military flyover zone. Uh, having a pine tree out there amongst all the cactus seems to not, not fit in with the rest of the landscape. Those are my comments. We ask for some consideration that maybe it be moved even further out into the property, so it's not right up against our line. Concerned about the effects of what's going to come from those transmissions.
All right, thank you for your comments. Is there any questions from the commission from Mr. Wilkins? Hearing none. Mr. Mueller, in your presentation, you said that Luke Air Force Base was in support of it, correct?
Uh, they had no comment. The case did go through the use consistency and compatibility determination.
They didn't have any concerns.
No, it was deemed compatible.
And for the record, I always ask that question when Luke Air Force Base is, is, uh, when it's within its flight zone, so. Is there anybody online? David?
We're not aware of anyone else online.
Okay. Would the applicant like to, to respond?
Um, yes, is, in relations to where the location of the site is on the property, this is the location that is chosen by the landlord of the landowner of that property, and he is not willing to let us move the site.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the commission for the applicant? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public forum for further discussion from the commission. Hearing none. Now you get a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation to approve MCP 2023 004 as presented by staff.
Hey, thank you. I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hernandez. Do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Lindblom. I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Lindblom. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
No.
Commissioner Lindblum.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
No.
Chairman Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of three to two.
Hey, motion carries by a vote of three to two. Mr. and Mrs. Wilkins, we appreciate your comments and for driving all the way down here and, and fighting all this crazy construction downtown. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight. Darren, who's going to present?
Good morning, commissioners. Agenda item number eight, KC 2022 162, is a special use permit request for a vehicle storage facility for recreational vehicles and boats in the Rural 43 zoning district. The site is comprised of 2.5 acres in County Island located in the Gilbert area, approximately 207 feet east of the southeast corner of Gilbert Road and Water Tank Road. The current site is developed with a single-family residential home and as a vehicle storage facility, which is subject to an open violation case, Fee 2022 00812, for operating a commercial business in the Rural Residential Zoning District without the proper zoning entitlement. This SUP would rectify the violation on the site. The applicant is not including his residence within the special use permit request. The site currently includes a storage structure, 34 parking spaces in the rear portion of the site, a six-foot CMU wall on the southeast and west boundary lines of the site. The applicant is proposing on paving and striping the subject site in order to be in compliance to the zoning ordinance. The site is currently accessed along an ingress egress on Water Tank Road, which is maintained by the town of Gilbert. Water Tank Road is not a through street. The property owner resides on the site, but access to customers is on a self-surf basis daily between the hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM by a gate located on the northeast portion of the site. The site does not provide any dumping of wastewater or trash. Staff has received a total of four letters of opposition and 17 letters of support, including the ones provided through the handout memo dated December 6th. Most of the letters of support were provided from customers who currently or previously have used the existing vehicle storage facility or from a few surrounding neighbors. Out of the four letters of opposition, two were submitted anonymous, while the other two were submitted from both neighbors directly to the west and east of the subject site. Concerns that were highlighted in the letters were in regards to the proximity of the facility to the neighboring properties, privacy, and security. The site to the west is a preschool. The school's playground is directly near the site. One of the concerns expressed were regarding the safety of the children. There is a wall that divides a property, which the letter of opposition state, it has been broken down to, to the RVs parking too close and backing into the fence. Staff has also received comments from the town of Gilbert, stating they do not support this request as this use does not serve the daily needs of the neighbors and does not provide any adequate buffer to the residential properties to the east and south of the site. The town of Gilbert designates a subject site as neighborhood commercial, which supports small-scale uses under 25,000 square feet per use with limited traffic, noise, and sound impacts. Staff finds the proposed SUP is not compatible with the land use designation designation as the facility exceeds 25,000 square feet. Staff recognizes the general area surrounding the subject site is developed with single-family residential uses and therefore finds the use is not appropriate for the area. A commercial vehicle storage for 34 recreational vehicles is too intense of a commercial use at this location. This SUP would have an impact on traffic along Water Tank Growth Road, as that would be the only access point to the site. If these large recreational vehicles are not able to access the site through the gate, they would be required to back up into Water Tank Road, which would be a safety, safety issue and would have a negative impact on the flow of traffic in the residential neighborhood. Due to the valid concerns from residents and the comments from the town of Gilbert, staff finds that site is not appropriate and recommends a motion of denial. However, if the commission chooses to adopt a motion to recommend approval, staff offers conditions A through N outlined in the staff report. At this time, I'm open to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Are there any questions of staff from the commission? At this time? Hearing none is the applicant present, wish to speak? Yeah, please state your name for the record.
My name is Ronald Odey, you know, and I am a resident of the Maricopa County for over 20 years. Been thinking what you say, but it's some very important things. It's very important for me. I've been a landscaper for, for this 20 years and the same resident. Prior to me, a gentleman worked in the sim, similar business. My livelihood depends on this nature business that I'm proposing to have trailers parked in the same areas that you used to be parked, my trailers for landscaping. Since the pandemic, I canceled my business. I put into almost 10% of my business, and this is my livelihood with the storage. I'm sorry, I didn't know about the permit. And I want to comply with all the regulations that the county has. And I have moved forward to do that, to be in compliance. Question on the west side. I do have six children, three of them small children, three, seven and sixteen. I do care about the safety of my, my children. I always did. And the west side of the property with the school, the play area, it, it borders to my backyard. The only area that we are talking about that collides with that, with a playground is only five to seven feet. And I'm willing to provide a barrier, a separation and put some boulders between those areas. And just clarifying, that fence was not knocked by an RV or a trailer. It fell down when I was working myself around that area and I fixed it immediately. So the pictures that you guys can see in, in the forums that the neighbor has submitted, I have put plywood and requested an employee to push the RV so I could make sure my chickens and my animals don't go out of that area. I've been a very good neighbor to everybody in the neighborhood. It does not affect the traffic at all. I got blessing from the town of Gilbert saying that my business will not affect. It's correct. It's a dead end street. Any RV can come in. If they choose not to come into my property, they can go to the round, around the end of the street and turn around and go back. There's no problem. I only get between one, maybe two, five RVs a week. They'll come in and they'll remove it or they'll drop it. I give this benefit and this service to the neighborhood. Then right now, there's very difficult to find a storage in, in my neighborhood. So please, I want you guys to consider this. I have addressed every issue that they have brought, brought to me. I never done an application. It's very difficult for me. I've been very stressed out all this time that I've been applying. But I can just tell you that I comply with the regulations that the county have given me. My, my presentation will show those and demonstrate that I'm in a, a, a positive thing for my community. From the support, they say that sixteen or seventeen support that I got. Well, there were more of my neighbors around my neighborhood. They are supporting me. I always had problems with those two neighbors that are denying me. Even if I apply for a Christmas tree, they will still would deny me. Never support me. So I'm asking the board to be conscious and understand that if I don't have my RV, I'll have to go back into a landscaping business that I had completely dropped because my injury of my legs and they may think it's funny for the neighbors that are complaining, but it's not for me. This is my livelihood and my kids depend on it. So I'm asking consciously review it correctly. And understand that this is something I've been fighting for. It's the way I fought to be part of Maricopa County. I will not let Gilbert take over my property. It will not happen. Please review my, my case correctly. There was a lot of offsets, lack of information there. And I know you guys will do the right thing. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. One second. Is there anybody from the commission that has questions of the applicant?
This is Commissioner Swart. I have one question.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes, thank you. I, I heard you testify that you said you had a blessing from the city of Gilbert and that's not in my packet anywhere.
Well, I'm talking about the traffic control. They, they, they said there was no impact. Good, personally, they mentioned to me, no problem. We don't have no problem with traffic control. And when I met with the representative in Gilbert, the only majority of their conversation was annex to Gilbert. We'll take care of that. Annex Gilbert. I'm not annexing to Gilbert. I am Maricopa County all the way and it's not going to happen. They have offered me different deals of how I can since zoned commercial. I can basically go in the town Gilbert and convert my property in the two zonings. I'm not doing that.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Swart?
No, but that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the commission have questions of the applicant?
Yeah, Chairman Schlosser, this is Commissioner Limblom.
Commissioner Limblom, go ahead.
This question's for the applicant. Have, have you read the, the, the county has recommended that we deny this application, but has also said, but if we decide that this is a proper use of, a, a proper use for the property that we feel it is, that there's some conditions that they would like to be applied. Have you reviewed those conditions and would you be agreeable to the terms that the county has set? I, I guess my question is, have you seen those that are part of our packet and, and would you agree to all of those conditions or are there things in there that?
Yes, sir. I, I agreed. In my presentation, I am putting those things in place. I agree in all the conditions that the county gives me. And as I said, I'll make whatever suggestions the county recommended me.
That answer your question, Commissioner Limblom? Commissioner Limblom? No, I have a question of staff. Is this like one of the cases in the, we've seen in the past where, where like the applicant mentioned, did someone file a complaint or report him? Is that why? Having to go through the process?
That is, that is correct. There's an open zoning violation. He either needs to cease and desist that activity or obtain proper zoning entitlement, which this would be.
Thank you. Commissioner Limblom, did you hear the applicant's response?
I did not. I, I did not. It went, it went, it went blank. Could we, could we hear that?
I'll just reiterate if you doesn't mind. He agrees to all of the, the county's stipulations.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I, I don't have any more questions at this. Yes, that helps. I, I'd like to maybe, we'll, we'll hear from the, from the opposition and go from there, I guess.
I don't know that there is offense.
Okay. If there's none there, that's fine too. I'm good at this point with my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have questions of the applicant? Hearing none, thank you. Appreciate it. I have four cards of people that are here in person that are all in support, that wish to speak. But before that, is there anybody here in the audience that is in opposition to this case? Ma'am? Did you fill out a card? You wish to speak or you're just in opposition? Okay, yeah, if we could fill out a card. The first card in support of this case is Dennis Sullivan. Like to come speak. If you could please limit your comments to around two minutes. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My name is Dennis Sullivan. I live in Gilbert, Arizona. The PowerPoint presentation that is up there that I put together, can I show that real quickly? Okay. And also there was a question about, from a commissioner about getting a blessing from traffic engineering and we have that letter. I, I thought that you had it in your packet, but I do have a letter that shows that there is no conflict with traffic engineering. Okay. Special use application, if we can just flip to the next slide. Ron covered the first part of it, but visually, this is looking from Gilbert Road across the parking lot of the school. And as you can see, it's a couple of hundred feet across there. And there's no real visual impact from Gilbert Road looking at it. In the third slide, the slide on the right-hand side, that's looking down Water Tank Road. The vehicles that you see are on the right side are associated with the school, not this project. It's the next property. So if we can look at the next slide. All right, the next slide again, we're going down Water Tank Road and this is his property. And again, you can see that there's no visual impact. You would have to know that there's a storage yard here because there's trees, it's quiet, it's easy. And then the next slide. Again, this is where you would turn into the property. There's plenty of room. Again, traffic engineering has, has given their blessing to this. And there's plenty of room for any size RV to pull in through that gate and around to the back of the property and plenty of room back there to turn around. The next slide. These are traffic counts from the last three months of people that have come in and either picked up a vehicle or dropped off a vehicle. And you can see in September, there were ten. In October, there were eight. And in November, there were six. In all likelihood, in the months of December, January and February, there will be one or none. The people that store their vehicles here store for months at a time. And then they go on vacation, they come and get them. They go on vacation for two weeks and then bring them back. It's not a bunch of people coming in and out all the time. It's a very, very quiet thing. Again, you would have to know that it's there. And then the next slide. This is the aerial view of his lot. And up in the upper left-hand corner is where the school is. And you can see where the school playground is, where in the, the five or seven foot section of, of his lot. There's a twenty-foot buffer there that is landscaped. And it's landscaped with boulders to ensure that nobody could get near that wall and knock it down. We've have agreed that there's a landscape buffer around the property that will be five feet on the west side that'll include trees and boulders. And on the east side, it's a three-foot buffer that will include trees and boulders too. Okay. Then at the bottom of his lot is where his water runoff retention is. And the picture of the, the equalizing pipe is on the right. That was a requirement and that's been installed. Just wanted to show that. And then the next slide, please. And then this is the letter from the town of Gilbert and Kyle Maris, I believe. And it, the issues that it, it states right here are limited length of time for a special use permit to gauge or reduce negative impact. We're requesting a five-year permit so that can be done. So if they have traffic council, they have issues, then that can be done. So I believe that's satisfied. To ensure residential properties, east and west, east and south are adequately buffered. We have done that with the landscape buffer to provide adequate site planning and access to eliminate impact on Water Tank Road. We have assurance and a letter from traffic engineering saying that what he's doing is not going to affect traffic flow patterns. And no onsite lighting, we've agreed to that, that there will be no onsite lighting. And I, I believe another thing was said that the hours of this would be six o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock in the afternoon. His, his request is to go, is to have six o'clock in the morning till six o'clock in the afternoon. There wouldn't be, be light required in any case. Okay?
Thank you. Very good presentation and comments.
Thank you. If you'd like this copy of this letter.
Hand it to staff. Is there any questions of Mr. Sullivan from the commission? Hearing none, thank you very much. I have three more cards. I gave Mr. Sullivan extra time for his presentation. He was so prepared, sorry. The next card in support is Ronald Ore Giron. Sorry if I mispronounced it. Do you still like, oh, that's you? Okay. Okay. Sorry. No, you're good. The next card in support, Alejandro Ricardo.
My name is Ale, my name is Alejandro Ricardo. Oh, he's, let's say close, okay. He is my neighbor. I live on the north side. That's the first house. My house is a lone Gilbert road on the west side, the south side, Water Tank. And the north side is poor. I'm in the corner house. It's very close. And you know, I don't, I don't hear, I mean, he's a good neighbor. It's very clean. I don't see any, everything is normal. It's pretty clean. I don't, I don't know if people stories and, some trailers or something because no. I, I work over there with my, my wife. And the only thing I notice, I hear a lot of traffic, but it's not for him. It's from the daycare. The daycare, they hear a lot of drop off and pick up kids. So they, it's a lot of traffic in the corner only. And also a lot of, you know, the kids are screaming, that kind of stuff, that kind of noise. Because you know, my house is, my born, is, is connected with a water tank. So it's, I can hear almost everything. But with this guy, you know, I don't have any problems. He's a good neighbor. I live there, she signed that my house was built in nineteen ninety-nine. So I'm moving in and I never had any problems. Even my, my kids and his kids, they went to school together. So we are friends. Very helpful. So I support him.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Last card in support, Judith Estrin. Wish to speak? Please state your name for the record and if you'd.
Judith Estrin.
Comments, I'd appreciate it.
I traveled a lot on Water Tank Road. I had a friend that lived on the street that I worked with, so I was on the street quite a lot. I had seen the sign that up, that was up for a permit and appeared to have been there quite a long time. So I started to look up what was going on with it and read everything. There was something that was written that was not true. And I felt like it implied had grave implications because of it. So I came, I wanted to come in and speak on it. It was written by the person from Greenhouse Montessori, Jennifer Papp, I guess her name is. After the building of the school, there was a lot of traffic on that road. There was parking from employees on both sides of the street near the corner. If, and you could tell because when they left or came in the car. As I was driving out, someone driving in or vice versa, it's very hard to maneuver. There really wasn't a lot of room and it presented a lot of danger. It was really amazing to me at that time of the lack of concern for the neighborhood and for the safety. It was just a really not good situation. And it was a daily situation. So the person I was friends with was not real happy about it. A lot of the neighbors were not happy about it. They were the ones that contacted the city of Gilbert to complain about it. The city then decided there would be one side of the street with no parking, which of course affected everybody living there also, not just that corner. On page sixty-eight at the bottom, I think it was page, sorry, thirty-eight at the bottom and thirty-nine at the top. It implied that Ron was responsible for the signs and implied actually evil on his part of his motivation for that of trying to manipulate. That just wasn't the case. It was people in the neighborhood this was affecting that were very, very upset about it. So I did notice after the signs were taken down that some, there was more employees parking in front of his place, twenty-five Water Tank Road. You could see from when they left, it wasn't all the time, it was occasional. I never once saw RVs leaving from his place, from twenty-five East Water Tank Road, never once, leaving or coming in. And his has long-term parking. If somebody's going to leave and come in, it's going to be occasional. Hers was daily. I think there's a huge difference there. I keep hearing concern about traffic. And I just don't think that's an issue at all. My question here, actually, is how could the school get a permit at that time when obviously there wasn't enough space for parking, very apparent at that time? How, I know the county asks how many employees and wants to know that kind of thing. So I don't know how they actually got the permit, because it was such a detriment to the neighborhood. You know, at that time. So just wanted to speak up, because I felt that what was said was not accurate at all and implied things that shouldn't have been implied.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Appreciate it.
One last card from the public in opposition, and her name was just mentioned, Jennifer Pap. Please come forward. If you could state your name for the record, please.
My name is Jennifer Pap, sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so.
That's right, take your time.
I am in opposition. I am not in opposition of small business. I am a small business who has been in the community, serving the community for over sixteen years. I have gone through the process in the proper forms. I took my property from R forty-three, the whole thing I had to do, and I zoned at C one. There was lots that I had to do prior to opening my business. This business has been going on for years without anybody looking at it, checking, monitoring it. And my concern is the safety for the community in which I serve. There are RVs there, there are cars parked in Basin B, which he shows on there on his plan. There are cars there, buses, RVs, all things are parked right there. My question is, who monitors that? Safety, if there's combustible things inside of the RVs, trailers, buses, wastewater. He says that wastewater, he can't control these things. So my question is, fire access, how do, what is the safety requirements there? Yes, the fence has been knocked down. If Ron says that it's because he was doing work, it shows how poorly this, this and old this, excuse me, this wall is, a three-foot setback, anything could happen in three feet. If this is approved, I would really encourage that that wall have to be properly replaced by a general contractor. That it is as high as possible, because it is an ISO. My parents, you know, their children are there. When you have families whose children are there, they pay attention to things. So it might not be visible from Water Tank Road, or my property is a buffer. But there are boats, and there are people, and there are, there are things there often. So my concern is that of safety. I can appreciate that Mr. Oregaron is on disability, and this is a way that he wants to provide his livelihood. But in the same respect, we have to go through the proper channels, and he has not done that for years. The three-foot landscape, he has still parked his trailers very close to that wall. If safety was a concern of his, he could have come and said, you know what? I'm sorry that this has happened. I'm going to make sure that this is not going to happen again. It will be a ten-foot setback. I will put the concrete buffers there. I will do everything in my power to ensure that this does not happen again, which has not happened. And I do have another question, how just part of the parcel can be zoned and not the whole parcel? Because he can be R forty-three with some, and he can have an SUP for some, is that what can happen?
I mean, that's a question for staff.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's all I really wanted to comment on, was the safety and the illegality of him doing business there.
I guess that's it for now. I had a few comments, but we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak? See none. David, is there anybody online wishing to speak?
Yeah, there is no one online wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public forum. Any further discussion from the Commission?
Chairman Slosser, this is Commissioner Limbom.
Commissioner Limbom, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just, this is my district, and I'll go ahead and just kind of make some general comments on this project and where I, where I think my head is. I'm, I'm one that would tend to support this use, and I'll explain why. The size and scope of the project, it's small. And the nature of the, of the, of the business, the amount of traffic, the amount of the use is one that is very minimal impact. It is not one that will, in my mind, change the nature of the neighborhood. From the street, it appears as a residential neighborhood. But also, moving to my next part of it, the location. The location makes a really big difference to me. If this was in halfway down the street, I probably would not be as, I don't think I'd be supportive of it at all. But it's not. It's near Gilbert Road, and it's, I actually believe it's a, it's a pretty decent buffer use for what is a school, which has children and noise, and it's a commercial use. And I, I tend to support projects when I believe they don't change the nature of community, and they're not going to negatively impact the neighborhood, the neighbors. I don't hear, see, and hear a lot of the neighbors making a big case about it, and it's because they probably and I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into why, but they're not, they're not in opposition to this. And I wouldn't be if I lived down the street, primarily because it doesn't impact me. Duration's really important to me. They're asking for a five-year special use permit. I'm very comfortable with duration. This duration matters to me in this particular case. Allow the use, let's see where it goes. We address it again in five years. Five years goes pretty quick. I'll get into, we talk about process and proper form. You know, he is here today, trying to go through proper channels. I am not a punitive person. And I tend to, I, I am, I am, I like when people come and they try to be compliant. And we look at it on its merits, and I don't look at it in the, in the past. I do look at behavior in the past, and were they a good neighbor? And did they try to be a good neighbor? And those that typically aren't. I'm more hesitant to agree with special use permits, because I worry that, you know, they, they won't follow the, follow the guidelines. But in this particular case, I don't see a lot of evidence of them being a bad neighbor. I think those in opposition bring up a fair point on safety, and we can address that with you know, ballards, walls, those types of things, if we, if we wanted to address that. But overall, in my mind, for, for, for the reasons that I just indicated. I just feel like it's it's, it's, I wouldn't zone it this way forever, but a special use permit for five years, I'm leaning towards letting six to eight, ten of these roll in and out. Pretty quiet neighborhood, really, so with that, that's just kind of where my head is right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Just so everybody knows, I echo Commissioner Limbom's comments. I do have one comment after other applicants, if they wish to, to comment. But I echo Commissioner Limbom's comments a hundred percent. Is there any other Commissioners that wish to speak? Or have any comments? Very none. My only other comment, the most striking argument. It was part of one of the gentlemen that stood up in favor of it was the, the the traffic count display. I mean, that's how can you even tell when someone's coming in and out, ten, ten in a month, or whatever the amount was at the most? So I think this is very minimal impact, and I'm going to be in favor of it as well. So is there anybody, there he has, I can't remember. Is there anybody else online, David? No, already closed the public forum.
Yeah, there's no one online.
Okay, I'm sorry. Lost my train of thought. With that, I'll ask for a motion, probably from Commissioner Limbom.
Yeah, Chairman Slosser, I'll make a motion to approve. I'm trying to pull the case number up, Z two thousand twenty-two, one sixty-two. Well, let me, let me rephrase that. The, just for clarity, the, we've I, I guess I would make a motion to approve with the stipulation staff has outlined, should we agree to do it. Is that, is that motion correct?
Sure.
I'm looking to legal for that, yeah, okay.
I'm getting yeses from staff.
Okay.
Nones from staff.
That is my motion.
I have a motion to approve with the staff's recommendations from Commissioner Limbom. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Landolt, second.
I have a second from Commissioner Lambo, Landolt. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Commissioner Landolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Limbom?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
No.
Chairman Slosser?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval, a motion to recommend approval by a vote of four to two.
Okay, thank you. Motion is approved. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to the, I believe, the last case. Item eight or nine, was there a typo? Item nine, yes. Staff like to present? Mr. Landis? Please?
Chairman Slosser, members of the Commission, item number nine is for KC two thousand twenty-three oh ninety, which is rezone request from Borough Forty-three to C two CUPD for a toy barn facility generally located at Cave Creek Road and Fifty-third Street, within Supervisor District Three. The rezone would allow for the toy barn development, which is essentially a high-end extension of a self-storage facility in which each unit is owned similar to a condominium. It is not a residential use, though. This title, if approved, would need to be followed by a subdivision plat, which at this time has not been applied for. Staff is recommending the Commission adopt a motion recommending the Board Supervisors approve Z two thousand twenty-three oh ninety, subject to conditions A through I for the following reasons. Generally, self-storage facilities such as toy barns generate minimal noise, a small number of visitors, and very little traffic at any given time. For this reason, the proposed use is compatible with the nearby residential commercial uses. Additionally, the applicant has worked with the community on making the facility more aesthetically pleasing. As both part of the CUPD overlay and within the staff recommended conditions. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commission of Staff? Very none is the applicant here, wishing to speak? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. Alex Hayes, twenty-five, twenty-five East Arizona, Biltmore Circle. Is there a clicker for the? You got there, okay. You know, Adam Vaughn and I have been working on this case for a number of months now, and this has actually been one of the favorite cases we've worked on recently. And it's not just because we believe in the toy barn product, and this project in particular, we do. I would really like to have one of these myself, though I think I'd probably be filling it with actual children's toys at the moment. And it's not because we believe in the land use and the compatibility of this, we do. But it's actually been our experience with the neighbors and the collaboration and the positive working experience that we've had. You know, we do this type of work a lot, and oftentimes with opposition or with, you know, neighbors that come out to for a project, it's often, there's a lot of anger, and there's a lot of vitriol, and it can be very difficult. And in this case, these neighbors were very organized and very you know, firm and tough, but they were always very fair and always very kind. And I think that that helped us reach what we think is a great compromise for this project. And you know, we did our level best, but you can't always make everybody happy, and I think you'll hear from a couple of those folks tonight. But I think, or this morning, but if, you know, if every one of our cases had this positive experience, I think I'd be a much less cynical person. Next slide, please. It's just a bit about the site. This is approximately a seven-acre site. Currently zoned RU forty-three. It contains two different parcels, or rather, one parcel and a portion of another. And our request is to rezone this to C two CUPD. We're not actually bringing forward a plan of development at this time. This overlay is actually just to provide some custom development standards and stipulations that are actually intended to be kind of more restrictive for the site, and specify that this site will be developed as a toy barn and to ensure compatibility for the neighbors and to kind of honor the agreements that we, we worked with those neighbors on. The, the portion of the parcel is really, is connected to the site just to the south, and that is a, currently operated as a commercial nursery. The parcel to the south is actually the subject of its own rezone application, which is currently on a completely separate track. It's an independent application unrelated to, to this rezone request. Next slide, please. Here, you can kind of get a sense for the land use pattern in this area. Obviously, there's residential kind of west and north of this site. But along Cave Creek Road, there is a significant trend toward more commercial uses, especially as you approach Carefree Highway, which is about a half-mile north of this site. Again, south, to the south, you have the, the commercial nursery. To the north, you have a Dutch Brothers, and then going farther north, more significant commercial retail centers. Next slide, please. Here, you can see the existing site conditions. This is again, the, the commercial nursery. You can see a lot of the hardscape materials that are stored there, some of the structures that are you know, greenhouses and other nursery-related items. In that top right, you can see, looking north towards the line at Dutch Brothers, which is no surprise, has a line of cars there. Next slide, please. And then a bit about the, the toy barn itself. These are privately-owned warehouse condos. These are kind of luxury storage units. They're individually-owned, platted condos. They're governed by commercial owners associations and CCNRs effectively. We'll have a property manager to make sure that the property is run appropriately. And the way these are typically used are, they're, again, individually-owned, and people like to store their, you know, their hobby cars or their kind of high-end recreational vehicles. And they, you know, because they have, they have plumbing, they have electricity, they have you know, all kinds of communication capabilities that people like to have, you know, put a TV in or a couch or kind of a hang area. Maybe sometimes put in a bar or other types of, kind of, they trick them out so that they can have a place that they can come work on their hobbies. And I think maybe important to note that there's no outdoor storage associated with this project. Next slide, please. Again, this is a compatible development. We haven't yet done, since we don't have a plan of development yet, we haven't done a traffic study. But if we did, I would be highlighting it, because this is a very low-impact use. These, there's about ninety-two units in this project, and you know, there won't be that many trips associated with each, each one. There's only so many times a week that you can turn a wrench. So it is a low-impact use, and certainly it is compared to the other types of uses that could be on this site, whether it's a typical, you know, commercial or retail use. Or we heard from some of the neighbors that there was, have been some multifamily developers hovering around this site and some properties to the north. This would certainly be a This would certainly be a less impactful use than those. And again, we've, you know, worked with the neighbors, which we'll kind of highlight in a moment, on some conditions that will certainly improve the compatibility of this proposed development. And this is just a representative image from some other toy barn facilities. But we don't, at this time, have renderings for this site. Next slide, please. So our neighborhood outreach began with our initial neighborhood meeting notice. And we had our first neighborhood meeting on September 7th. We had approximately 10 people show up and we heard, you know, a lot of the opposition was centered on the impact to the neighborhood to the west and particularly the traffic on 52nd Street. There was concern that you'd have users of this facility entering from 52nd Street. And we assured them that that was not the case, but at the time we were showing emergency access to 52nd Street. And I think that that kind of scared some folks, but we, the good news is we were able to remove that emergency access from 52nd Street. So now there's, there is no access whatsoever fronting 52nd Street or towards 52nd Street. And I think a lot of that concern was really based on the fact that 52nd Street is one of the only cut through thoroughfares with no stops between Carefree Highway and Western Road. So a lot of people on Carefree Highway trying to travel south are using that road to cut through. And so they're experiencing some cars coming through with some speed. But after that first meeting, we, we had a number of individual meetings and in person email and phone calls with neighbors in the area, and particularly the, the neighbors that were most directly affected by this project immediately adjacent to the west. We went and toured, toured their home and, and saw, you know, kind of firsthand what their experience would be. And, and we were able to kind of have a good back and forth on, on what they would like to see with this site to, to, you know, ensure that it is as compatible as possible for, for their experience. And we can walk through some of that in a moment, but we then had a second neighborhood meeting on the 19th at which we shared the revised site plan and how we were able to incorporate a lot of their comments. And at that point, we were happy to share that there wasn't any opposition that we heard then. And there was some appreciation expressed for the amount of coordination that we had. So again, we were grateful for that, for the dialogue that we had. Next slide, please. And these are, we're going to kind of click through a few items here, but if you want to click. The, the first thing we, we wanted to memorialize with the conditions of approval was the, the enhanced setback along 52nd Street. So there's a full 58 feet provided. Again, that's to kind of remove the, the project as much as possible from 52nd Street and the experience of, of those neighbors. Next, you can click, please. Yeah, there you go. We agreed to a max building height of 28 feet. This is actually less than what is permitted in, under the current zoning in RU43, which allows 30 feet. These, these buildings are a shade under 28 feet and, but that was what the height that was required to accommodate this product. 15 feet is on the north setback line. Again, that's, that's additional five feet than what's required by the ordinance. We talked about lighting. There's a lot of requests from the neighbors to, to stipulate toward the Cave Creek dark sky ordinance, which we were willing to do. Ultimately, the ordinance requires, or the condition of approval requires that maximum lighting height of 10 feet within the project and six feet within that setback along 52nd Street. And then along 52nd Street, we have, in addition to the setback that will all include enhanced landscaping, there'll be enhanced architecture on those building facades that face 52nd Street. So that will be, you know, likely have a southwest character, but kind of more, more visual interest on those western facades. Then the, the block wall on the western perimeter will have kind of muted desert tones that again, to encourage compatibility and with that kind of desert landscape that currently exists there. And then no access to 52nd Street as we, as I mentioned. And then, you know, lastly, there was, there was concern about the, well, two items. There was concern about this being a bait and switch, that we would get this approved for a toy barn. And then we would bring in some much more intense commercial use once we've rezoned it to C2. The applicant, the development team has, has no intention of doing so. They're, they build toy barns. And so we were willing to limit, we included as a condition of approval that the use will be limited to individual non residential garage storage units with an associated clubhouse. And we have extra language ensuring that there will not be a residential use because that was again, a particular concern of the neighbors. And then lastly, on this slide, I know it's the last item on the agenda here, so we'll try to move quickly, but there was, there's, this property includes a wash that runs through and heads west. And there was some concern that, that this development would somehow increase the outflows from the property. And we just included a condition that this property will comply with all Maricopa County drainage policies and standards and that, you know, it will collect, retain and convey runoff in, in the historical pattern. So next slide, please. We're grateful to have staff support on this project. They were, you know, they led us kind of work with the neighbors and honored the agreement that we were able to, to come to. And then, you know, just to kind of wrap up the, the project benefits, go to the next slide, please. You know, this is, it's a unique and innovative approach to, to recreational vehicle storage and private indoor storage. As you can see from this picture, it's, it's not your typical self storage unit. It provides a convenient amenity and, and it does so in a way that has minimal impact on the surrounding area and is compatible with the, the surrounding land use patterns and certainly development pattern along Cave Creek Road. So with that, I think I'll, I'll open up any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll let you have time to rebut with the opposition that we have. Are there any questions of the applicant at this point from the commission? Hearing none. David, is there anybody online wishing to speak?
I'm not aware of anyone online.
Okay, thank you. I have five cards from the public. The first one indicates they do not wish to speak. Grace Alexander, that true? Wish to speak? Okay, for the record, she is in opposition. The next person, I believe, I was told that put together some kind of presentation or video, Beth Osmer. And then I'll give her a little extra time since she put together this video. And then we're getting short on time here, so I'm going to limit the remainder of those speakers two minutes, but go ahead.
Okay, I won't, I won't speak much. I'll just show the video. My name is Beth Osmer and 5045 East Enith Lane. And what I'd like to show you in the video is, yes, I'm opposed to toy barn and many of the neighbors are. And like Alex said, they've been super helpful, very cooperative. So if this project goes through, we can be on some sort of common ground. But I want to show you our neighborhood and it's right, toy barn's going to be on the line of Cave Creek. So it's like Phoenix, Cave Creek. And the rural beauty of Cave Creek is stunning. And there's so many people that want to come in and take over our neighborhood. And we, the neighbors are just at our wits end with how, it's like we're crouching in more and more business. Toy Barn is a 24/7 business. Yet they say it's low impact, but there's one, two miles down the road and we see the amount of RVs coming in and out. This is a very quiet residential neighborhood with amazing beauty and a huge wash, like Alex said. And there's already issues with that wash. So I just want to show you, this is the history of Cave Creek. You'll see the beauty of the neighborhood and yeah, that's it. You can watch the, show us where we're talking about. Is there sound? Oh, no sound? Okay. There is a narration to it and music.
Feel free.
I don't have it memorized. But these are pictures of the neighborhood and the history of Cave Creek. And this neighborhood has almost been, has been talked about as a historical site because it is, it is one of the oldest neighborhoods in Cave Creek. It's very unique and a toy barn will, it's just going to really affect the aesthetic. And as the gentleman said, on what the other case, he's a no if it impacts the neighbors negatively and this will impact the neighbors negatively. It's hard to tell without the. That's the old rodeo ground. So where they want to do toy barn is, is close to the original rodeo ground of Cave Creek. And also there are horses. It's a horse neighborhood. There are horses around there as well. So the construction, the noise, all of it's going to impact the horses in the community around there. So in this, we're just talking about the history of Cave Creek and the beautiful open spaces all around. We can shut it off in just a minute after, because there's no narration, but I just want to show you one quick thing that's going to come up on the video. Okay, so here are where, this is what's going to show you all the industry that has been popping up around our neighborhood for the last, I don't know how many years, decade. And we, we really want to continue to keep the rural aesthetic and lifestyle going. Cause we, as you see, there are multiple businesses already popping up around that. And this just gives you a visual of that. And Toy Barn will add, it's right there in the neighborhood. It's neighbors that are right across the street that are going to block the view to Black Mountain. Okay, you can, you can shut it off now because it's hard without the narration. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and putting that video together. Appreciate it. I have one more card in opposition that wishes to speak. And then I have two individuals that are neither in support or opposition than wish to speak. We'll start with the last person in opposition, Gail Garrett. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Gail Garrett, 5030 East Tanglewood Circle, Cave Creek. I just wanted to put it on the record that I am in opposition. Not so much because they have been offered us a lot of concessions to make it beautiful, but it's still a toy barn. It's still turning our desert rural buffer into commercial. I grew up in Scottsdale. I watched Scottsdale change as soon as the zoning changed. It's just like a circus and, you know, it, it's very hard to control. So I waited a very long time to move to Cave Creek. We've had our home there for 14 years. When we bought our home, there wasn't even a Walmart. And you could see by the video what's been happening. My concern is that it's going to continue if that also is, you know, zoned commercial. It's just going to keep domino effect. And we are very concerned about that. We all moved up there for a certain kind of lifestyle. And that's what we have, desert rural equine outdoor lifestyle. And so I would very much like to see it kept desert rural and have something a little more appropriate in line with the feel, the look, the views in our neighborhood. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for limiting your comments. Two more, I don't know if you still wish to speak or not. Michael Johnson. Neither in support or opposition says neither perspective. If you could limit your comments to a couple of minutes and state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Michael Johnson. I live on 52nd Street. Will be directly across the street from Toy Barn. So I have a few points I want to make. First, this is an interesting sociology experiment because as everybody has said, there's been a lot of dialogue. There's been a lot of understanding of each other's points of view. And so we can hopefully through all that find some imperfect solutions that tend to work for everybody. So that's been good. Regarding Toy Barn and it does, so I'm against it really. Because I don't want poured concrete walls across the street from our house, looking out our window. It's going to mess up our sunrise views, partially obstruct our views of Black Mountain, which is a big landmark in the Cave Creek area. It will very much inhibit our two neighbors to the south of us, their views of Black Mountain, once it goes up. Apparently, the Cave Creek Planning Group or, you know, staff, they have been approached by Toy Barn a couple of times and have said, no, thank you. We don't want a toy barn in Cave Creek. Average lot size for residences in Cave Creek is a little over two acres. So like in our case, we have a travel trailer and we built a garage to put that in. People in Cave Creek generally have enough room to store their own properties. And the view of the Cave Creek Planning Team was this doesn't really benefit our residents because we're able to, to, we have enough room to store our own toys and stuff. City of Phoenix apparently has said no, or their recommendation is no to this because it doesn't really fit into their general plan. Not sure what their plan would be for this property. And that's why we're not, my partner and I are not directly opposed to this because we'd rather not have residential, rather not have apartments or senior living. My dad's 88, he lives in senior living. That's fantastic, but that's in the middle of Chandler. It's more suitable for them, not necessarily for us. So at the end of the day, neither, really, I'm not their best cheerleader, but I appreciate that we've been listened to. I appreciate, as was shown, they have made some accommodations for us to try to make it more fitting for our, what we would like. But at the end of the day, we'd all love a dog park there, but that doesn't generate much money, tax income, anything like that. So just perspective, not, not real thrilled about having poured concrete walls across the street from us. But we appreciate that we've been listened to and there have been some accommodations made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. One last card. Neither in support or opposition, it says neutral, Julie Goldammer. Please state your name for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Julie Goldammer. I live at 34022 North 52nd Street in Cave Creek. And thank you, commission members for, for listening. I've prepared a little spot here so I don't go off topic and I time myself and should be two minutes or less, hopefully. I live directly across the street. I live with the gentleman who just spoke. So our home is up on that north corner there, the, not the top house, but right there. So we're directly impacted. I am not a fan of having a bunch of commercial looking structures or commercial businesses in general impede on our neighborhood views, values or way of life. But if push comes to shove, I'll acquiesce to a rezon with the list of conditions. These conditions rightfully limit the physical and aesthetic encroachment on our residences by limiting building height, light intrusion and unnecessary egress and traffic. It also includes ways to soften or buffer the wall and buildings with landscaping and more appealing structural characteristics, as you've heard in the presentations. I've truly appreciated the Toy Barn team's professionalism. So I'm going to keep adding to the love fest here and Joel Landis's assistance in working through this process. This is the first time I've had to deal with Maricopa County in this aspect. And I, it's, it's been a very cumbersome, burdensome process, but I'm doing my best. aspect. And I, it's, it's been a very cumbersome, burdensome process, but I'm doing my best. What is truly frustrating right now is the second rezon. I know this is two applicants, but I'd like to make my peace here. The second rezon request for the remaining parcel, the gentleman who owns this right now, that Toy Barn is trying to purchase. It is one big lot. It's close to 10 acres. That case number, I'd like to go on record, is Z2023052. It has been put into its own silo and assigned to a different planner. The owner has been under, operating under a special use permit as first a wholesale and then a retail nursery. And let me tell you, it's been out of compliance with a full-time occupied residence on the property, just like a traditional R48 would be. And it's been directly across for us before we got there, but it's been there for years, the residence, and it's still being lived in. To me, we are splitting the larger parcel. So the plan should be to address them together. Neighbors, consistent expectations of conditions in both of these overlays, we expect the same treatment. And we're not confident that this is going to be the outcome. It makes no sense to apply different standards to each of these applicants, and that is what's happening. If planning and zoning is ultimately recommending approval with conditions, then I respectfully request the commission, apply consistency in these conditions between the two parcels with respect to the proximity of these operations to our homes, including but not limited to what is allowed along the street frontage. Height limitations, limiting traffic and egress onto North 52nd Street. Limitations on using the street as a loading zone, which is currently happening. The treatment of setbacks. All parking should be inside the business walls or fences, not granting billboard exceptions to be close to residences. Not being allowed to sell or store materials outside of the business wall or fence along the road, which is happening. And similar conditions on softening and buffering the type of buildings, so we don't have to look at ugly fences and worn-down structures. As an engaged resident of the county, I see the separation of these cases as burdensome on the residents and staff. It can be more efficiently addressed both from a planner perspective and a neighborhood perspective if we review and agendize these cases at the same time. There may be two applicants, but they want the same outcome, which is to rezon to C2. This isn't a special use. And for our neighborhood, this is one big decision that will have forever impact without any positive financial benefit to us as the neighbors. I ask the commission to delay this vote until both cases can be addressed together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd offer the applicant a couple of minutes for a rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair. You know, there's no doubt that the Cave Creek and this part of Valley is a beautiful place. But that doesn't mean that there's not areas that are appropriate for commercial development. And one of those would be along a major arterial road. And Cave Creek Road is a, one of the major thoroughfares in this area. And as you could see from the, the exhibit showing the development pattern, there is, you know, commercial development in this area. And this would be, so I think it's unlikely that this would ever be single-family use. So what's going to come here? It's probably commercial or a multifamily use. And this is a very low-impact, context-appropriate use. And I think that the, with the conditions that have been, I kind of agreed to and worked and collaborated on with the neighbors, this is a very appropriate development for this area. Regarding the, the other property, I think I just want to make clear that this application for the Toy Barn property has nothing to do with the property to the south. And I think what we've been able to accomplish shows the value of, of collaborating with the residents. And if, if they haven't done so on their application, I think that is coming on them to do so, but should not impact the ability of our case to move forward. And, you know, if we move forward today, we'd be happy to help facilitate those conversations with the property to the south as they move forward. But we would respectfully request that we continue to move on our own separate trip. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I guess just one last time, David, is there anybody else online wishing to speak?
Chairman, there is no one online.
All right. Anybody from the commission have questions of the applicant before I close?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Swart?
Yes, thank you. Someone testified that this is going to operate 24/7. Could we please have the applicant respond to that, what the hours of operation are?
Sure, go ahead.
Because these are privately owned condos, they, the owners would have, you know, keyed access to their own unit. But it'd all be behind, you know, 24/7 security.
As a follow-up of that, Commissioner Landau, how, in your other facilities, how often are you seeing outside of business, general business hours?
Thank you. It's a good question. Very limited to never. I mean, these, it's just people, you know, storing their, again, their hobby cars or their RVs. And the instances in which they would be coming in the middle of the night to, to use that are very, very few and far between.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other commissioners? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any further discussion or comments from the commission? I guess I'll add a few comments. First of all, I appreciate everybody showing up and giving their presentation. I guess as a background, some of the comments about you moved out there for the lifestyle. And I grew up on a farm in Levine. And we went through the same transition back from 2000 on. Prior to that, I grew up amongst alfalfa fields. And the nearest house on, to the east of me was a mile and a half. And the nearest one on the west was, was two miles away. And what sort of solidified my opinion on this case is, and then one point that one gentleman brought up about there could be worse uses than this, that was a very valid point. But the video that Ms. Osmer brought up that showed the Walmart, the Verizon, and all the other stuff that's coming in and around the area, that's just, that's just the way things work in progress. And, and the same thing back in Levine, everybody that had acres or five acres, they sort of, by having those properties and building their own detached RV garages or horse barns or whatever, they sort of built their own open space, so to speak. So I guess my opinion is, this is a very low-intent use, and I would be in support of it.
Echo Chairman Schlosser's comments as well. It's just, I think, the, the willingness of the Toy Barn to try and comply and be as accommodating as possible is what pushes me towards, leaning towards approval as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner?
Chairman Schlosser, Commissioner Lindblom, and I'll, I'll be brief. I, I had same rural upbringing as Chairman Schlosser and Gilbert, have familiarity with the Toy Barn, seen several of their other projects, the design of it, and the way that it's kind of internal facing in a lot of the ways. I, I'm in support of it. I think it could definitely be worse. I don't use that standard too often when I look at things, but I actually think it's a good use. And so it's, it's, it's a good use for the site that helps with harmony of the community. And, and I, that's, that's my, my position as well. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Is that Commissioner Swart?
Yes. And I just want to echo the same thoughts as all of you have just testified to. I'm very happy with this developer, that each person that testified in opposition said how much they appreciated the cooperation and the work and the professionalism and respect that they gave them. That's very important to me. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely. I'll make a motion for appro, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Please make a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval with the listed stipulations.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve.
I'll second. Commissioner Lawrence will second.
Lawrence?
Yes, Lawrence will second.
Commissioner Swart made the motion. Roll call, Voip, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Landau?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindblom?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Chairman Schlosser?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously. Any other matters, Stern? All right. This meeting is hereby adjourned.